Okay, so before we get started tonight, we have a couple of new faces in the room. And so Ms. Emma Wigan.
Wigan.
Wigan is gonna help us with the administrative portion. And Zach Lade is gonna be our guru for technical support. So yay, welcome, welcome both.
Thank you. And as you know, our Janet retired. So we're, we had the, you know, the good fortune to have these two people come in and help us out in the interim. Both Zach and Emma work in Parks and Recreation and, and the museums. Zach works the museum on Saturday. So, so we're, I'm personally real grateful that they were willing to come and help with this while we search for a full-time staff person to replace Janet.
Outstanding. Welcome to you both. Okay, well, it's 1800. Good evening, Commissioners, city staff, stakeholders and citizens of DuPont. Welcome to the City of DuPont Planning Commission meeting for the 28th of April, 2025. For those attending for the first time and those listening in via YouTube and Zoom, my name is Jeff Fo and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is a body of volunteer citizens who serve as advisors to the mayor and the city council. Our delegated authority is to maintain the city's comprehensive plan and land use code consistent with the Growth Management Act. Meetings of the Planning Commission are open, public meetings, and they're being recorded. There is an opportunity for members of the community to address the Planning Commission. Instructions on how to do so are on the city's website. Ms. Wigan, would you please conduct the roll call?
Present.
Commissioner Thacker.
Commissioner Thacker.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Burleson. Commissioner Shu. Scow. Commissioner Scow.
Present.
Commissioner Fo.
Present.
Commissioner Lynch.
Present.
Commissioner Coleman is absent and excused.
Actually, he was trying to sign in online.
He is on Zoom.
Yep.
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, he's there. I can hear him.
Yeah, I'm present if you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Just barely.
And then Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, next item are public comments. Are there any public comments from chambers?
We haven't received, we haven't got, we've got, we've got people that are gonna join our meeting. So, and to help us as we work on these topics tonight. But I don't see any people in the chambers to comment. And I do not believe we have anyone online to comment this evening. That is Patrick Kelly. Patrick's with HBL. So he is helping to take notes for tonight. Who else do we have there? Patrick and John?
Yeah, Patrick's name must be, he must be using his.
Do. Would you like to provide a public comment this evening? Anyone that's joining the call, would you like to provide a public comment this evening?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have not received any emails or any written comments for this evening's meeting.
Perfect. No, no problem. Next item on the agenda would be approval of the agenda for tonight. It would be appropriate for there to be a motion to approve the agenda as published.
I move that we accept the, yeah, accept the agenda as published.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion regarding tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Next item of business is approval of the meeting minutes from the 14th of April. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the 14th of April as published?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from April 14th.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes as published for the 14th of April, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the meeting minutes are approved unanimously. Okay, next item of business, business, is our unfinished business with the comprehensive plan update. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Kincaid.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have some folks that are gonna help us with our meeting and provide some input. Our, folks that work in the economic development and in historic and cultural resources. So we're gonna review the changes that the staff brought, changes to Chapter Six in the Historic Cultural and then we, we discussed those changes. So the slideshow that will follow will show the revisions that were made based on that discussion we had on April 14. But then I'd like to introduce Carol Estep and Bridget King. Carol's right on this end, Bridget's on that end. They are both with the, they're both board members with the Historical Society. So they can provide that input, you know, and this should be a very free-flowing dialogue. I know they have prepared some insights for us. And so we can refine what we have worked on based on their input tonight. The person in the middle is Portland Williams and she's the Executive Director for the Chamber of Commerce. So when we move away from the Chapter Six into discussing Chapter Four, the Economic Development Goals and Policies, Portland has agreed to join us and have that, have that discussion with us again with some business insight to be able to help us with that, with the work that we're doing with that chapter. I have on the agenda that we would be discussing the Chapter Ten Capital Facilities and Utilities Goals and Policies. That was a handout that you had. Depending on how long this first part of the discussion goes, we may wanna just table that. I still have to get, I still have to get some meetings with fire and police and finance in the city to really bring you some of the information that we need to be able to, to work on that. I mean, certainly the goals and policies are something that, that we all are, it's in our wheelhouse to think about that. But then when we get right into the, the data part of these chapters, that's input that we need to have from the different sources. So I don't have that, that for you tonight. So with that, the next slide, if you wanna bring up the slideshow, then we can just go right to the third slide. Thank you. Here we go. So we, like I said, we, we had the chapter, we discussed it on April 18, the Goals and Policies. And then there were some of these that we felt needed to be massaged or worked a little. So what you have on these slides is the revisions that were made from that discussion. So, so CR 1.2, you can see that we have the, the policy reading partner with the state, county, tribal nations and nonprofit organizations. And we just struck the, to promote the preservation, it wasn't, it was more of a wordsmith, housekeeping, but to preserve archaeological and historically significant sites. That was what came out of that meeting to clean it up, make it a little more succinct. And then CR, Policy CR 1.3, we had a lot of, you know, what, what do we wanna do with this? So I went ahead and struck that. And below you see my proposed rewrite to protect and preserve cultural resources and bring awareness of the community's historic assets through interpretive and educational materials and programs. So I'm seeing head nods there that that seems to read better and it hopefully captures what you were all talking about. And just stop me at any point. So then we go to the next slide. We were, Policy CR 1.5, where you had the language in there that was existing in our plan was about the memorandum of agreements that the city has, that we observe and implement. One of them was made in 1989. It's an agreement, memorandum of agreement between the Washington State Historical Preservation, the Chippewa Office, Warehouser, Real Estate, City of DuPont. And then the other one that's still valid was adopted, agreed to in 2000. And another memorandum of agreement between the Warehouser Company, Real Estate Company, DuPont, Nisqually Point Defense Fund Committee. And this was the preservation of the Nisqually Mission Historical Site, the Nisqually Delta Association, the DuPont Historical Society. But, so we, those exist and obviously we need to leave, we need to leave that there, that the, these are agreements that the city entered into and they have not been rescinded in any way. But to clean this up, what I'm proposing is that we say, I struck what was there and I say that we're gonna adhere to those following existing agreements. But as I indicated that I've been working with Brad Beach, with the Nisqually Tribe, that we, we would like to work to develop a memorandum of understanding or an MOU between the city and the tribe regarding cultural significant assets. So those are the three pieces of this that I think is complete. But I'm guessing that, you know, if, if Carol and Bridget have other thoughts, they can, they can certainly bring that to the table. And then we move to the next slide where CR, Policy CR 1.6, there were, there were a lot of, we had a lot of, what do we do with this one? So I struck that and rather than trying to do the, the strike through underline, you know, this is new. This is, I just rewrote below, "I propose to explore and use a wide range of funding sources for the sustainable protection and maintenance of the city's cultural and historical resources." I think what we were trying to say in the existing one is that we wanted to make sure that we were financially viable. But I think that really was getting at, let's make sure that we're sustainable in terms of being able to always, you know, find funding sources to be able to protect, protect ongoing protection and maintenance. And so those were my, that's my attempt to try to capture what I think that we were trying to do in the adopted CR 1.6. We decided to strike, looks like Commissioner Chase, did you?
I just wanted to go back to 1.5 for a second. To me, there's a disconnect between adhered to the following, okay, never mind. I corrected, nothing, it's fine.
Oh, okay. So then we'll go, so, so the CR 1.8, we, I had in my notes, Patrick had in his notes to strike that. It was redundant, so we're showing that struck. And then CR 1.9 is a policy that we have changed the wording there. Consider DuPont's cultural and historical heritage in all aspects of planning and development. I know we had some, like this, the words, the master planning and park design and all that was tripping us up a bit. So I'm proposing that we really simplify it and say, when we do planning and development, that we are gonna consider those cultural and historical, the heritage in, in planning and development. Yeah. And the last piece of what we talked about in Chapter Six two weeks ago, the implementation actions. We had CRA 2, Cultural Resource Implementation, where there were a lot of words to say, a lot of, I think what we really wanted to say, I struck all those words. And I think what we were trying to say in this one is to work with our partners to implement and manage a coordinated interpretive sign program to educate people about cultural and historical points of interest within the city. So I'm seeing head nods that that seems like that works for you all. And with, with that then, I would really like to invite Carol and Bridget to share. They have looked at this document. I think they may have made some notes for further consideration as we, as we continue to revise this chapter. It's been something that has been very important for quite a while in, in this sense that we're there, we need to have stronger goals and policies around our historic and cultural resources. So Carol or Bridget, did you, either one of you wanted to, did you have any notes or anything you wanted to bring to our attention tonight?
Well, mine was more on the.
Oh, good. Good.
I agree with the, the first paragraph, front of second set. I think it was, but in its comprehensive plan because of a high importance. Here, I need to.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. I pretty much rewrote that whole first paragraph there. And I can just give you that and you can use it or not use it, one or the other.
We thank you for that.
Yeah. I just didn't like the way this flowed and, and I feel that the cultural resources and historic preservation element should be for more than just the importance of its residents' interest in it.
Yeah.
So I, I'll just give you that whole paragraph then afterwards and then you can just determine whether or not you think it's important or not, or that it should be changed. Then if we move into the, I guess it's kind of the second paragraph. Part of this where it says, "You don't have a full inventory of all of the historic resources. A full inventory is not provided due to the sensitive nature and best practices." I'm not exactly what you're getting at, what the, the only two historic resources that we have in DuPont that should not be listed are the Two Middens. And the tribe have asked that we do not list or show where the Two Middens are. But otherwise, I'm not sure what you're talking about, sensitive nature and best practices. I'm not sure what best practices are that you're talking about.
Do you, thank you, because I think that there were, you know, the tendency was just to write things that sounded good. But at the time, or maybe they fit whatever was happening at the time. But the, the middens, we know that that's something we, it is protected and it's, but as far as the inventory, what would you suggest? First of all, first question, do you, do you think it's important to, for us to do the research and to have a listed inventory of things in this plan?
Well, my thought is, my thought is yes, I would like to know which historic sites you are, the city is really interested in preserving. I mean, we have the Mission Site listed on here. And in my opinion, we have not preserved that at all. I mean, we're down to a small monument in the middle of a parking lot. And in my opinion, that is not preserved in the Mission Site.
Right.
So I guess what I would like to see listed here are which, which historic sites are we really serious about preserving and making access to the public or really saying are important to us? And if they're not, then we're not gonna worry about them, about them. But if they are, then we should be fighting to keep them as historic sites and preserving them.
Yes, and this is conversation that I've had probably, maybe even the first week I started with the city, with, with various people, is that we, the city, we need to identify and designate those sites. And that's what we are missing here in this plan. Because once they are identified and designated as important sites, then they carry that weight of protectionism that we're seeking. And that that was something that was not done for the, for the monument site here. And therefore, that's why we were not able to protect it. What are your thoughts, Planning Commissioners?
Yeah, I agree. I, you know, I think the first step is we need to, you know, look at the list and say, hey, look, is the list comprehensive? Are these the sites that we want to identify so that we can appropriately protect and use that potentially as a draw for the city?
Yeah, and I think that what we're missing, that we might wanna put in here is that we want to develop that program to be able to designate important sites. That's missing right now. We've gotta have a program or a way to actually identify and, and mark them on the map as maybe it's an overlay that we put onto that site. I'm not sure what that exactly would be. But, but that's what we, I don't see that in these goals and policies in front of us now. So if you're thinking that that's something you would like staff to work on writing and bringing in the next revision, I would be happy to do that.
Yeah, I see lots of heads non. Commissioner Scow, you have a comment?
Well, I'm asking on your, your knowledge of the history. I know we are very all familiar with the, the old Nisqually Site, the Wilkes-Emory Cemetery. But as we, in what are, what is the probability as we embark on starting to develop and excavate the Old Fort Lake land? We know that already that the tribes are gonna be involved because of the potential of finding anything. Do we need to prepare for, in this comp plan, the possibility of finding a site we're not aware of? Or are we pretty, or are you, I mean, are we pretty exact that we know the sites? I guess would be.
Ms. King?
Thank you, Jeff. So I have the historic district document here with most of the sites that we already know about, which there's a lot, there's a page and a half. Anything that was at Old Fort Lake is probably under the golf course, would be my guess. But if they're, you know, with, you know, I mean, it was scraped pretty good and it was all dumped under there.
Well, the, the 1833 Fort Side is on the Historic Register and it has to be protected. And we can't, I mean, there are a lot of rules we have to adhere to before we can do anything. And the first rule is we have to have a complete survey done on it before we can do anything, an archaeological survey. But there are other things out there. There's where the pit saw used to be, which is right out in front of the 1833 Fort Side, but it's not on the, the property. There are, there were other burials out there that might be nice to at least have interpretive signage for them out there. It would be nice to have a walking trail of going from all of these historic sites. But probably the only, but then part of that is too, how far do you wanna go back to the history on that you want to preserve? Now, the DuPont Company was out there and used the whole half of the west side of the Old Fort Lake area out there. We have blueprint maps at the museum that will show you where all of these different buildings and everything were located. How far, how far do you want to take the DuPont Company? But we certainly should, somewhere out there, be putting either interpretive signs or, I don't know that we can set aside property, but we certainly should be acknowledging the history of the, of the DuPont Company being out there making dynamite and black powder and where all of those things were. But you, we kinda have to decide how, how, what, we can't preserve everything. So we have to decide what are the most important sites that we really, really do want to preserve? The Native Americans, I mean, there were burials all over the place out there, but we can't preserve all of those. But the, the Native Americans, the Nisqually Tribe has a cemetery out there. But that's their property and I'm assuming that that's not going to be disturbed. I would hope it's not going to be disturbed. So, but yeah, there's, I mean, you know, it, part of it depends. But I do, I mean, we are all more focused on the Hudson Bay era. But you know, we also do have the DuPont Company history, which is a very important part of the history here. And so we have to decide how far do we want to go to, to preserve part of that? Or at least have it recognized that it was out there.
And that's where I see two separate goals. So you have what's unidentified and what's already listed, that we are not preserving right now. So, and there are many important things that, and, and it's not just going back to the past. We aren't archiving, we probably are archiving, I know the museum has it in Tacoma. The Palisades part of DuPont is a neo-urban. It in the future will be a historic area, as is the, the actual company town. And we need to incorporate that. We were historic when we were built, the new part of town. So it's not just way back in the past, we're creating history every day that we go forward. How are we gonna document that? Brad Beach and I talked before about having, you know, the city and the Historical Society are quasi-municipal. They're not actually municipal organizations, that we need a cultural assets committee, which I think, I recall these types of things being established in comprehensive plans as goals. So I really think that should be a goal because that's how this warehouse over here happened on the cradle of history in the Pacific Northwest. Because we didn't have a city organization in the process. And Carol and her organization, the museum, do a lot of work, but they are quasi-municipal. And if we really are this historical place, a three. a three-page chapter didn't do it for me, and I pinged exactly on what Carol did, you know, listing four items when there's already, I don't know, probably 35 documented on here to include the first hydroelectric power station.
Right. So that list that you are referring to is part of what?
So there is Lorraine Overmeyer. Now, this is a 2007 update, and I'm not sure where we're at. It got dropped when Lorraine Overmeyer died. There was a whole historic corridor that was approved by the Department of
Archaeological and Historic Preservation.
That one. Okay, so that's already in progress, and that would be another goal I would put in here. Let's finish that sucker. The work was already done. The sites were already documented. Let's put it in here and make it a goal to finish it.
When you say finish it, what, what is left to do?
I think it needed the city to act on it, and the administration at the time decided it wasn't.
Well, there's a couple of things. There was a cultural committee that Roger Westman and Penny Dussel served on. And we've got a whole three-ring binder at the museum of their findings and what they did. They also, the first time in 2014, we put together the plan, which is now part of the Parks and Rec Comprehensive Plan, or it's, will be once it gets voted on by the City Council, that lists probably about 13 or 14 of the major historic sites and how, where they are located, how we could develop them, how we could preserve them, what we should do with them. But if you really, really want to get into this big list, then we pretty much have to go back to the cultural. This big list that Bridget has lists a lot of little things that probably should be noted that they're there, but I'm not certain that we can go. And, and the one way to do it would be to put interpretive signs around everywhere say where they were. But, you know, it's just like right out here in Sequoia Creek, there's the dam that the DuPont Company built that took the water out of the creek and into a wooden, what do I want to say? Reservoir, or that ran all the way down to the bluff at the end, where they had the upper powerhouse and the lower powerhouse. And they made their own electricity for the plant. There's still a couple of electrical posts out there, electric, and their wires hanging them on them. You know, we, those are part of the DuPont Company. They're there, we should be preserving them, not letting them just go away. This little dam that's sitting out here in the, in the creek, we should be preserving that. There's just a lot of little things still around that we should be preserving or that we should at least be making notations of where they are. There's part of the telfridge that brought the materials over off of the boats and across the water and then brought it up the hillside. There's still parts of that telfer out there. Actually, I've got pictures, the archaeologist that was out here last year, who found the cradle and where the, the, it was called the pin stock, that took the water from the upper power plant down to the lower power plant. Out there on the hillside, on the bluff, there's still those cement cradles that carried the pipes down. Those should be being preserved, or at least, and I don't know how you preserve all of this stuff. But, and partly because a lot of it is on private property. And, and it's like the Mission Site, the Mission Site's on private property. You can only do so much on a person's private property. But those still should be being mentioned somewhere, and those still should be in the history of DuPont.
Commissioner Chase, do you have a question?
Thank you for bringing up more than just the ancient history of DuPont. I guess that's how we're going to phrase it. But yeah, I think the, the DuPont Company has, has greatly affected the history of the, of the town, the city. To not mention the DuPont Explosives Plant is, is, you know, terrible. I was just, as you were describing things that we need to save. Of course, in Sellers Park, the canopy there is, is the framework of some of the, of a building out from the plant. If you go and look at how it's constructed, you understand had they had an explosion, or when they have an explosion, what the building was exposed to do to some degree. And that's a different construction than normally you see in most sheds or most homes or whatever, most businesses. Yeah, I think we need to do, I think, and I don't know what's, I remember seeing your list, but, that you were talking about. But are things also like the Historic Orchard? Is that included in that list? Or, or have we put it the same way of the Mission or some of the other places that are not going to be recovered if somebody wants to do something there?
No, I mean, the Heirloom Orchard, the original Heirloom Orchard, the 1843 Fort Site Orchard, which is in the buffer of the wetlands. I mean, that definitely needs to have some, some work done. The problem with that is it's in the buffer of the wetlands, and we're very much regulated on what you can do and what you can't do in the buffer of the wetlands.
True, but I believe there are exceptions to the buffer. So I, I'm concerned that you're, it needs to be part of a designated safe zone, if, if, if indeed that orchard is important. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I think it's important. I mean, because some of those trees, even though they are rotting from the inside out, a lot of those trees, you know, that are dying, or, but they're still important. And, and as long as, as there is, even though there are new saplings that are coming up, they're still part of the old tree. And yes, I think, I think definitely we need to be doing more with that orchard and preserving that.
I wasn't bringing it up that I think it needs to be torn down. I was trying to say that we need to, if, if it is important to the city, then we need to safeguard that or make sure that it's safeguarded. That's all I was.
Now, I will say they have started the, the new orchard and grafting from the old trees onto the new ones and all of that, which will at least keep the varieties going. But, but still, I think that that is the old Heirloom Orchard. And I think it, it, I mean, it's from 1843. It should be, it should be noted, it should be preserved as much as we can, that we can legally preserve it. And yeah, it needs attention.
And the new one is, again, history isn't just signage. The new one can be a community involvement enterprise as an open-air museum of how things were done with the apples and how they were processed and things like that. That can be. And so even though it's new and it has the offspring of the old tree, as much as we can do. But I would like community involvement to be also one of the goals in here, so that we're not just identifying, but we're, just like Hudson Bay days, doing things with that history. And I, I just wanted to say, the first thing that jumped out at me, which I love, is, you know, we're taking away all the words encourage and promote. I'd go through the entire comprehensive plan and replace those with action verbs, you know, like structure and systematize. And spearhead is one of the suggested terms, you know, and say in there, who is doing that and going to do that? And identifying the responsible people. And so I see some of that started here, and so, thanks.
Well, some of it is, and right now it is. Mike Farley has taken over the new part of the orchard. You know, I think we volunteers are terrific, and I think we do lots of good work. But volunteers get tired. Volunteers move on. Volunteers get frustrated and give up because you can only fight the same fight so many years in a row. And if you never make any progress, you may never make any, you know, you have no real obligation to it other than just your interest in it and your wanting to see it taken care of. But Mike Far, I mean, we started out that new orchard with a committee, a committee probably of seven people, 10 people, I don't know. Now we're down to one person who has said, I'm going to keep it going. But Mike, Mike Farley is, he, he may not appreciate this, but he's kind of my generation. He's not a spring chicken anymore. He's not going to be able to be out there. And he's looking for somebody to take it over. And unless the city, unless the city thinks that these items are important enough to put them under some department that is really strongly needs to, feels that they're important to keep them going. And I'll go so far as even to say the city has to somehow put them in the budget. Because you cannot keep going and try to keep that orchard going. You can't try to keep the 1833 Fort Site going unless that somewhere it says, thou shalt keep this going. Thou shalt put some money into it to keep it going. Because if you're just going to say, okay, Mike is running that orchard out there right now, and then Mike gives up, and two years later, somebody else comes along and says, okay, I'll take the orchard over now. You've lost everything that Mike has done, and you're back to square one again.
And, and that's where the Cultural Assets Committee, we really need one.
Commissioner Thacker, did you still have a question?
No, I just have a comment on it. But first of all, thank you for sharing your wealth of knowledge and information. And I thoroughly enjoyed it. And I think in the past, we talked about it, how to move forward with the Old Fort Lake, and especially when the excavation starts and the construction starts, and a lot of people can get involved. Lot of state and federal and city and other committees can get involved. But I really liked the suggestion of having the list of all the sites included. It was the right question you asked, and there was the right answers. And we have all the list ready, one and a half page, which I would love to see it. And once we have that list into this chapter, I think there has to be a talk about the preservation and how much we can preserve. I really like that talk about it too, that how much can you preserve? And if it's a private property, how are we going to preserve, right? So whatever we can do in a minimum way, if we can put it into the document to preserve and also acknowledge, that will really help. Because like you are explaining, there is a one dam, and there is a one, some piece of wood out there with the wires on it. Well, if I am passing by while walking on a trail, and if I don't know, then I just think it's a piece of wood. So I think acknowledgement will also help in a big way. So that's the three things I wanted to say, list it, let's preserve it, and let's acknowledge it. Thank you.
Commissioner Lynch?
I have a question. Carol, you mentioned that there are burial sites all throughout, outside of the Nusqualee-owned land. Do we know where all of those sites are?
We know where, I guess what, we know where some of the sites were. And we know that when they were doing the scraping out there the first time through, a great number of those bodies were moved to other cemeteries around. Some of them were, if they were Native American, were taken to the Pualap Cemetery for the, the Native Americans. If they were English and we knew who they were, then family was brought. We have the seven over here in the reburial site across the street because, well, we know who three of those were, but the others, we don't know who they were. And so, but several years ago, they did a flyover of the, is it the LIDAR? Or the, yeah, what's the other one that penetrates the?
The penetrate, it's a radar, penetrating radar.
Yeah. And, and they still feel that there's probably, well, I was told, they still feel that there's probably about 28 burials still out there. Now, whether or not those will be uncovered or whether those aren't there for sure. But that's why we have the tribe out there. Is because if they, if they uncover a bone at all, they'll stop them. And so, so.
That's why, that's why I asked. If there are sites that we don't, are not aware of as yet, that will have an impact on construction.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
And, and there's probably artifacts out there that should be too, that are, are probably going to be uncovered.
So about the 1833 site, is that, what is the opinion of the Historical Society about what the future of that should be?
Well, we are hopefully going to have a meeting, if, if Amy can get it set up with Barbara and Amy and the mayor and the city administrator, just because the Historical Society has an idea of what we would like to see done with it. But we need to, because the city owns it. We need to meet with the city and find out what the city feels they would like to see done with it. Because if we plow ahead going in one direction, and the city comes back and says, no, that's not the direction that we want to go. We need to know so we're all going in the same direction. So we have visited, Robin Barrow and myself met with the folks that own the property out around the golf course. And we also met with Justin and Troy from the golf course out there. And part of the golf, well, the golf course is behind us. Albatross is behind us as far as doing with, something with that piece of property. They don't want to commit a lot until they kind of have an idea of how it's going to be laid out out there. Because they're really worried about golf balls flying. But the way the, the way it is right now, we're really quite a ways, I mean, we're kind of between the 18th and the 1st and the 2nd. But we're still, we're pretty far away from, you'll get hit with a golf ball now and then, but it's not going to be a big concern, I don't think.
Oh.
Well, I've been out there and found golf balls, but you know, it's got to be a pretty, pretty long hitter that's, has no control over their ball, let's put it that way.
Yeah, the chain link fence is actually a pretty good boundary.
Yeah.
You know, the question would be is what additional items? Yeah, the question would be is what additional items, you know, a parking lot of, of some sort out there, and that would be closer to the number two fairway, I would think.
Yeah, but then let's decide, are we going to put a parking lot out there close to the, the, or are we just going to say there are going to be sidewalks and roads that people can park along the road and then just walk into it? Or is there going to be a trail system that they can just walk the trail and get to it? Now, we, the other thing is, is that the 1833 Fort Site is surrounded by golf course property. So they're going to have to give us permission to, or access or to get into it. They kind of agreed with us that to begin with, well, like I say, the first thing we have to do is an archaeological survey, but they kind of agreed with us that the first thing that we should probably do is clean it up and turn it into maybe a park-like setting that the, that the citizens can use and tourists can use, and maybe do some signage out there. My dream and my goal, and I may never see it come to fruition, is to rebuild the 1833 Fort Site out there, just like they have up in Point Defiance, and make it a real tourist destination. That is my goal, and that's my dream. Whether we ever get to that point, I don't know. But I will be happy to begin with just to clean it up and turn it into a park-like setting that the people can use, and they can come out and say, I'm standing on the 1833 site where Kitson stood, or, or McDonald stood, or whoever else, you know, was out there. And I think, and I've said this ever since I've lived here for 21 years, 22 years, we are giving away our history. And we've always given away our history, and we're letting other cities use our history. And Tacoma is the biggest one, but any other little city around us that can prove the Hudson Bay Company set foot there is basically using our history, and we're not doing anything with it. And I think we're missing out, really missing out.
Did you get a sense, I mean, do you think we'll have, with the access to this site, any, other than the errant golf balls, any security questions or concerns with folks in, you know, traversing over maybe an allowed trail or easement over the golf course property?
Do, do I feel that we'll have trouble with people walking on golf course property?
Well, because they're gonna have to walk through the golf course, and we, you know, and I'm just wondering if, if, when you were talking to Justin, if there was, if they raised that concern, because how, how do we keep, how do we keep people out of the golf course and on the path to just go see that site, is what I'm wondering?
Well, the, I think the golf course is also going to try to develop their property around it a little bit, I'm not sure, and I don't think they've come to a complete decision what they're going to do with it either. Their biggest thing that they kept saying to us is worrying about the golf balls.
Okay.
And, and the liability of people with that. There are golf courses all over the United States with houses and developments built around them. And people just learn that you don't go on the golf course. And they have rangers out there on most cases that every time you step on it, somebody's gonna be there telling you you can't do it. So I don't think they're worried about that as much as they're just worried about the liability of it. Now, I'm a little concerned, I'm, I'm, once that gets built up out there, I'm not concerned about damage to interpretive signage or the property or anything so much. And you could, I suppose you could keep it fenced and the gate locked. I would like to see the gate locked right now, because I believe, once they start moving dirt out there and people figure out what is out there, and I think we're going to have artifact hunters. And if we don't secure that property, I think we're going to find that we're gonna lose anything that's out there. And that's one of the reasons that we, we didn't want the, the metal detector people out there either.
Yeah, thank you for that, because.
Vice Chair Scow has a comment.
Yeah.
And then Commissioner Thacker.
So moving towards the fact that we're working on the comp plan here and listening, and I think you, obviously, as we all know, you're very passionate, and you evoke a very sense of pride that we all should have. And in looking at that, I guess going over the one thing maybe we need to reevaluate in wording is making things, I mean, we've all kind of pussyfooted around it, and we've all kind of, well, we don't want to say this, but maybe we need a little bit more directive language. And I guess that's where, where does the comp plan have the authority to do that? Because obviously, we're not gonna be, the comp plan isn't necessarily gonna be doing with budgetary issues. We would love to require the city to do something. I don't think the comp plan has the ability with budgetary, so.
Yeah, it, it can, yeah.
So maybe not, and I guess my, my second question is, how long has the Historical Society been in existence?
1977.
Okay. Got some pretty.
Well, that's when the museum opened, the Historical, it started out as a steering committee, but it was set up in 1977 by the city council.
Okay, so we've had a pretty long standing. So maybe we need to have some better verbiage moving forward in here, and whether that's a second section, incorporating that instead of, like she said, relying on just a volunteer group, we need to, if possible, designate that the city has a paid liaison.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
If we, I mean, it may be struck down.
Right.
We can't do a committee, we can't do a department, that's asking a lot. But if the city incorporates at least a liaison, and that liaison would be someone who works with the volunteers and actually, and then also works with all the developers, and then the writing could also, you know, like, one of the things I noticed in here, so for CR 1.9, consider DuPont's cultural and historical heritage in all aspects of the planning committee, planning and development, and then adding the verbiage with the guidance or assistance of the DuPont Historical Society. So putting in there that any development has to be in, has to have, it doesn't mean we can't force them to listen, but at least have the communication. So it is, it is a directive, you have to, you have to talk to, for all the sites that you're talking about that we don't know, page and a half, may, I mean, I would think most developers coming in here, at least Albatross seems to, in speak, want to adhere to a lot of the historical aspects. So that would govern that you need to talk to someone. So if possible, I think in that is to create, have, maybe just kind of amp it up a little bit, and have, try to create a liaison who incorporates with everybody, works with the volunteers, works with the developers, and is a paid representative for the city. And then that kind of will help keep the, anyway, just kind of, you know, instead of it's volunteers who, like you said, the revolving door, not that the position won't, but will give that consistency that works with, because this is gonna be a project that lasts for the next 20 years.
Right. And I think, I mean, I think in terms of the comp plan is maybe a little bit looser in saying, not how we do it, but actually saying this, the words that we will budget for, and then, and then the actual, you know, if that passes, that yes, we're gonna put some money to this, then those, like, what does that look like? Is it a liaison or something? I mean, we could say such as, but leaving that slightly open, but I think the focus is to make sure that we have language in here that, that if adopted, would, would, would direct the city council through its own policy to start budgeting for cultural resources.
And it could be a person who is part of the Parks Department, or, you know, just to have some formal, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have a formal representative on this, on the city, on the state, a state, a city employee.
Right.
Whose main job is to focus on the historical aspects of the city.
We don't, because we simply don't have enough people, right? And then the other thing I wanted to say is that I think it's, it's great to tap into, like, what you were saying about that there would be some level of review by maybe a committee or the Historical Society, if they were willing to take that on. But we have to, of course, you know, see, that's, that's a, could be a big burden that they may not be interested in doing. But then we go back to whether or not we're talking about, you know, forming a, a oversight body or a liaison. But yeah, there's a lot of different ways to, to think about this.
Well, and if you put in that 1.9 with the guidance or assistance, that doesn't necessarily mean every step of the way, that could just be them reaching out going, hey, we're developing this, this plot, can you give us some information? And then in turn, so it could be just as simple as passing on the information you have.
I really feel like the establishment of a committee with some city representative, because the tribe would participate in it, the museum would participate, parks would participate. But right now, it's all disparate, and there's nobody to advocate, there's nobody for me to advocate for a Buffalo Soldier statue at the campsite, because I'm not anywhere in the budget structure. And I don't know, you know, when I talk about, you talk about other areas like utilities or trees or whatever, when you get into this, and you can say the legislative intent, dun dun dun, because there's codes. And I don't, I think this is an area where we're like in a, it's like a meh, right? And I, we can't go back and say, this is, you know, there's codes that say we have to, I mean, there are some.
Well, that's where we'll move this to, and that's why I'm, I'm suggesting that the actual implementation code work of it is what comes out of these policies, right? So, no, there's not much now, right? Right. But I think we have been given a lot of stuff to really think about, and, and for me, maybe to bring some, some stuff back to you based on this conversation. And I think, you know, in my mind, it's moving this needle a little further than what we have now to be more, to make this more important, to make this, I don't remember what you said, basically, but just more teeth, more strength behind these policies, because that meh that you get when you don't end up with any regulations or because you don't have any strong enough policies to actually turn into code. And that's, you know, when you say, oh, we may be able to do this, we might do that, well, you, at the end of the day, you have nothing to make code with, so, so exactly.
I mean, it's hard to understand in this climate and everything to, you know, the hesitancy is requiring the city to amp up one other thing in the budget. And that's, but I think if it's one person, and like you said, it could incorporate, you know, just even a liaison, just someone whose formal, full-time role is to take on some of the burden that we rely on. I mean, you know, we've written Old Fort Lake policies, we've written DuPont, and we were looking at this, this is all based on, basically, in, in, in an abstract way, relying on the Historical Society to back us up.
And the tribe, yep.
Yeah. And I think if we, we need to have a little more directive in listening, we have, we have to have a little more directive of the city to like, put your money where your mouth is.
What I think would be helpful, Carol, is the list, if you could give us a list of those sites to help us get our arms around, what are we talking about? That would be helpful for us to go forward.
Right. And I think what I'll do is get the rewrite, and really, probably you will see, not the May 12 meeting, we're gonna be doing transportation, but the, if we have a quorum and we can meet on May 28th, if we agree to do that at the end of this meeting, then having a, the chapter that you would have a draft would be significantly different, based on, you know, the rewrite and getting this, this list of things in here and strengthening those policies. So that's what I would suggest based on this.
Commissioner Burleson, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to comment based on what Melissa said, because when the development starts on, at the sub lake area, if we don't have things really spelled out, and the developer says, well, it's not, where is it? You don't have it, I think we're gonna, we're gonna miss out on the things that are important and valuable. So I, I really like your suggestion. And then we have somebody, we put things in writing, we put them in code, and then we have someone who is monitoring, and, and the developer has someone to come back to, you know, it's just not up in arms, and then, well, I didn't know, and, you know, if this is an important, the whole community has areas and things that are important, but as we get ready to develop, do this huge development with something that is so important to the city of DuPont, if we don't have our ducks in a row, we're gonna lose everything. And then all we're gonna do is be able to cry about it.
Well, I think that this was a really great conversation, and thank you so much, both Bridgette and Carol.
So I have a couple of little things that maybe I'll just give to you, and you can see where they kind of fit in. But one of the things is, several places in here, you don't actually, let me see. Well, the one thing here, you say as early as 5,700 years ago, the Nisqually tribe did something. If you look on the Nisqually tribe's website, they say that they've been in our area for 10,000 years. So if, if you want to use 5,700 years, we know they've been here for 5,700 years, because we have two middens that have been carbon dated back that far. But when we say as early as 5,700 years, that kind of makes it sound like they've only been here 5,700 years. But if we're going to their website, we should recognize that they say they've been in the area for 10,000 years. So we should be, we should be going along with, they say, we shouldn't be, I guess, insulting them by saying, oh, no, you've only been here 5,700 years, because the carbon dating only goes back that far. The other thing is, there's several places in here where, well, we, we use kind of generalities as to when dates were, and we say, and eventually expanded to how's the Puget Sound Agricultural Company? Well, we know that Puget Sound Agricultural Company was started in 1839. So let's just not say, well, down the road 20 years, they decided to start the agricultural company, when we know they started it in 1839. It's, so there's several places like that where we don't, where we aren't saying the date. In my opinion, if you know the date, you say the date. In my opinion, if you know the date, you say the date because otherwise that's how your history gets all messed up because people start putting their own dates in. They may be close, but if they're not accurate, then let's put the the correct. So anyway, there's just um, I'll just give you my notes and then you can go with them, whatever. And then if you want to send them back to me, I'll I'll go back in and re-edit and see if we got it all lined up, so.
Great. Thank you. So I think um we go go ahead and then we can, you know, use the second hour to talk about economic development. How's that sound?
Yeah, after Commissioner Thacker, I want to give Commissioner Colvin a chance. If if John's got any questions, go ahead, Commissioner Thacker.
So I've been really paying attention to every word you guys are saying and Carol and Bridgette, thank you so much again. But listening to one of the things, your dream, right? Your dream. So when I listened to your dream, it reminded me during COVID time, I was driving through the Dakotas, North Dakota and South Dakota. And they did rebuild four sites and some of the historical and they built it in such a way when we walked into it, we literally thought that we are in that fort site from thousands of years ago, just out of plain wood and that wood also looks like very old. And it was really nice. And to get that feeling, I think I agree with you that we should have something like that. The question becomes how the, like you said, the volunteer things will not work out. So the government involvement is necessary. And I think Malinda really talked about it, how. But also there's a challenge of having the budget and stuff. So like we are the volunteers here for a planning commission, we are not paid, but still we can do a lot of things. And same way, if there is a possibility of implementing certain things, I would love to see that as an action item. One more thing before you get there and before I forget that. And I think the one thing you mentioned about locking it up, right? And I think I agree with you because the archaeological artifacts are more precious than gold and diamonds, to be honest. And that's why people wants to buy everything from Egypt, right? Because that preserves the money more than the gold and diamond will. So I think there is some action items required and how we can do it, uh, that's something we can talk about it.
Okay, the how. There is money out there. The first place that we would start is with Pierce County LTAC funds. We give, we, DuPont, give like $600,000 a year to the Pierce County LTAC fund. And we get very little of that back because nobody is writing grants for it. And so the first thing we will do if we get permission to do the survey out here is write a Pierce County LTAC grant to pay for the archaeological survey, or at least to get us started with the archaeological survey. The other thing is Pierce County has preservation grants. Now, the LTAC grants, you don't have to have matching funds for. The preservation grants, you do have to have matching funds for. But there are other grants out there. You just have to go searching for them and you just have to find somebody who can write a good story to get them. So there is money out there. We just have to jump in and and say, hey, here we are, we want it. And Pierce County should be giving us back that $600,000 a year.
Did you?
So if I can ask you one more thing, that as we, planning commissioner, how can we help you at this time to make that dreams come to reality?
It's a good question, but I have to say this is outside of the scope of the planning commission. Right?
But the beginning is to write a good plan that is well-written out, that is clear, and that is um that you can get the city council to buy off on so that we know the city is behind us and we can start working towards it. But if you write a good plan that's clear and laid out and says and's got a few teeth in it, um, that's your part of the job.
I think we all agree with you. We all can do it together.
Did you want to ask Commissioner Colvin if he had any comments?
Yep. Commissioner Colvin, do you, would you like to make a comment? It's a three-hour time difference, so. I think we can go ahead and move on, ma'am.
Well, let's um, thank you again. Let's um go to the next slide, please. Okay, so Economic Development, Chapter Four. This one, we, first of all, we want to recognize that there is a lot of outdated and old stuff in it. Data needs to be updated. We we do know that. But the thought is that we are focusing um really on kind of the the goals and and strategy, if you will, because um when this was originally adopted, um, it seems to me that there may have been a different economic development strategy at strategy at the time, really leveraging the Old Fort Lake property and maybe more manufacturing, bigger industry sorts of things. And as you know, when we um came through with the Old Fort Lake, it was much smaller, more neighborhood scale is what we ended up with in that. So just first of all, there's, you know, the standard goals with policies underneath them. And I know that Portland has had a chance to at least sort of look at some of those and may have some some, you know, conversation starters for us. But what what do you all think from what you've read?
Commissioner Burleson?
Just a question. So you you started out by saying that this information is old. So how, when will we see new, updated?
Yes, I will bring updated information. I wanted to make sure that before I started eliminating things and updating things, that I was giving you the data that fits the story.
Right.
Right?
Okay.
So I'm kind of trying to get your 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 thoughts about what the story is for our future here in DuPont. We can, you know, the first goal is to recruit, grow and retain a diverse spectrum of commercial and industrial development projects to increase employment opportunities and provide a stable, sustainable tax base for municipal services. That goal, besides having a lot of words, I think is um, it feels bigger to me in terms of the scale of, you know, recruiting. We don't do business recruitment.
And it's all through here. It's meant this year, but we don't do any.
We don't do recruitment. And I'm not sure that, um, you know, with with the size of the city we are and the staff, we're talking about, you know, you you would have to have an economic development department, basically, to do that type of recruitment and we don't. So um, you know, maybe we look at other ways to, you know, sort of promote. I I don't, I don't know, but that's the one thing that jumps out at me. What what are your thoughts on that?
Commissioner Chase?
Yeah, I think historically, at least as long as I've been in the city and I think that's probably longer than anyone here in the room, um, we haven't done a very good job of recruiting or having an economic development board or or person that you could go to and say, yep, go to that person and you'll get your answer. I think that even the part of grow i- is questionable. Because when I think of grow, I think once again of activity or act action, you're either planting something or watering it, nourishing it. And I don't even know that we're necessarily doing that or effectively doing that. So I guess I I question both of those words. It it almost seems like economic development happens in the city by accident and not by any sort of planned. I think it needs to be planned, but I don't think it's happening that way.
Commissioner Thacker, did you have a comment? Commissioner Lynch?
If we want to keep that first one, uh, I think I would just take recruit, grow and retain and just make that support. Supported versus spectrum of commercial. And I think it needs to be stated somehow that the city seeks to support, even if we can't do all of those other things.
And the policies then under that, when we're talking about the, you know, the supportive role of the city for this diverse portfolio of commercial industrial development sites, you know, increasing employment, providing stable tax base. Then you see, you know, four policies underneath that that are very focused on the zoning, land use and zoning, buildable lands, the supply. So I think that, you know, we have done some of that work already. I feel that, you know, we've we've created these more of these mixed, well, the mixed use, changing the office at the to at the State Farm to be the mixed use, re-zoning the Old Fort Lake to have business, commercial and, you know, smaller scale, yes, but still small business, commercial, retail space there. So and it talks about then this creation of high-paying jobs by reviewing zoning districts. The the policy 1.3 sort of has me a little bit troubled, I will say. That would, you know, that's that office where people, but people in offices don't necessarily all have high-paying jobs, maybe tech jobs, but even those we know, I guess the landscape has changed.
Changed. It's definitely changed. So I would, I like what where you're going here, but I think first, the first thing I noticed obviously was all the old data. And I looked up a few new things, but it's not something that I have all the access to.
Right.
I think all the categories, so if you're reading through from the very beginning of the chapter and you're going through, I think that all of the categories seem really appropriate still. I just think that they need to be updated with current data. And and then once we see the data, we may decide if it's relevant for us to keep it in the plan or not. You know, because we are talking, talking, I mean, this was, most of this data is from 2010 to 2015. And I mean, we've had all kinds of things happen since then, right? And I think that it's worth it to go through these goals and and figure out which ones we've accomplished.
Yeah.
You know, just go ahead, check the box if it's something we did. We we zoned it for mixed use. Good, good on us. Now, we've got the retail, we've got the light manufacturing, we've got all the all the mixes, but what do we really have? Because we don't actually have the retail.
Right.
So so we may have the, we have the plan for the mixed use, we have the plan to build locations where people can live, but they don't have anything to buy.
Right.
So we we have a golf course that brings in about 80,000 people, but they drive right by all of our services and our businesses and go out there and then they leave and go somewhere else for whatever it is that they need. They might stay in a hotel, they hopefully buy some gas. I hope that they're buying some pizza or something, but they're they're not getting their nails done, they're not getting the physical therapy, they're not stopping at the library, they're not, you know, hitting up the other services we have, having their eyebrows waxed or they're buying a house.
Right.
You know, so we've got to, we've got to get aggressive there. I like where it says recruit, grow and retain. But I think all three of those need, they're all different pillars. What does it mean to recruit? What does it mean to grow? What does it mean to retain? And I think that, you know what, we're just really lucky right now because we've got a Chamber of Commerce that's getting up and running, that's getting some traction. I mean, I'm stressed out thinking how we're going to pay for all this historical stuff, but we we can, I think we can do it because if we if we grow some more taxes, obviously, but and attract some more people, but they've got to have something more to do here. And and I'm not trying to put down golfing because that's gonna, that's huge. But if if the, if if you have to step over all the other stuff to get to the one good thing, how, I mean, how long can the can the golf course shoulder that, right? So as I as I move on through through Goal ED1, I I think you're exactly right. We check, check, check. We've done a bunch of those things and I say we, meaning everybody else.
Yeah.
Done done those things. The the, oh, where am I at? The actively collaborate, ED2, ensure the public interest being served, balancing financial growth, all this. I've got on or two, three, it says actively collaborate with community organizations. We got to get get that somehow. I I like that that it's written in there to actively collaborate, but what does that mean?
What does that mean?
You know, and and I'm not, once again, I'm not trying to put anybody's efforts down. I want all the thoughts and prayers anybody has, but sometimes we need action. What does action look like? Does it look like showing up and being the face at an opening and just saying, I'm here? Because I don't, I don't know that that's enough anymore. You know, I'm certainly, the chamber needs some credibility. We need some big hitters to join the chamber and be part of it, which we've got. So Justin from the golf course is on our Board of Directors.
Good.
And we've we've got some some really good ideas coming from that and from the others that are joining our Board of Directors. So let's see where I got to. I don't mean to skip around too much. I just picked out the things that meant the most to me.
Good.
And by the way, this isn't just me. So I do have quite an extensive experience in corporate retail and the Fortune One company in our country. But I've been talking to and meeting with as many businesses as I can. Temper Sealy, they need people to work there, but the people who can take their jobs can't live here.
Right.
How do they, but they would come on a bus.
But there's no bus, right?
There's no transportation. Now, I'm not saying that the bus has to come all the way through our towns and get all the way back there. It can come, a silicon has a bus. I mean, somehow we can figure something out, but we've, we need some true support there.
We don't have all the pieces, was I'm hearing you say, you know, even, you're right, even if you get the one piece, like say you attract the business, they still need the labor resource and then the labor resource has to have a place to live and or a place to how they, you know, those or that's the package.
And and the thing is, is with it, with a Chamber of Commerce, we can fill in the gaps for a good amount of stuff.
Yeah.
In the spring, we'll probably have a job fair, first big old job fair that we can have in DuPont. And we will bring people from Lakewood to Lacey, JBLM, and we'll try to create job or or get jobs for people. Well, that's going to mean a few different things. That's going to mean people who live here get a job somewhere, maybe in Lakewood. But it means that all the people that have businesses here can come to the job fair and try to get people to make their mattresses. And, you know, if you drive out there to the area where Amazon and Temper Sealy and Cal Portland are, they've all got signs up that say hiring. And I and I asked Temper Sealy, I said, who drives by? And I, and I asked Temper Sealy, I said, who drives by here that sees that sign? You know, I mean, I couldn't, I can't even get in the gate to get to Amazon.
Yeah.
You know, so support to me looks like, or recruit, grow and retain, we need support there in, outlined in the city. What does that look like? And I think now, what we can add in is that the City Council can work with the business community, because now you can just call me and I can activate the business community. It's small, what I've got right now, but I'm, I'm working on it. But, but, and it'll get bigger. How did, how in the past, how 10 years ago did someone work with the business community? I mean, the business community has to be a group. We have to.
Yeah.
So, so there's got to be some effort put there. But work with the business community to find out what, what they can do. I think that these larger corporations in our community can come together and create a plan for how the buses or the transportation can get people out there. I don't know that we need to just say, hey, City Council figured it out for us.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to sit here behind our fences and just do our thing and, you know, make our mattresses and not say anything to anybody.
Yeah.
You know, I think that there's some collaboration that can happen there, but it's, I think it's got to be outlined.
I think that's a good, that's a good comment with ED 2.3 is, it's, it's partially there, but it doesn't go deep enough, you know, because it's.
It's a nice idea.
It's a nice idea, but we need to get more like when we're talking, what are we really talking about with community organizations?
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm wondering, you know, to promote citizen engagement, like we're not interested in citizen engagement, we're interested in business development and retention.
This is a place where I'm, is that we, I was going to use the word confused. It's not, it's not confusing, but we blend the citizens and the business a lot.
Yeah.
It's been up to the city, i.e. Amy, to have activities that generate business for our businesses. Today, we, we are looking at another organization in town that can help generate that, which is the Chamber, right?
Right.
So as soon as, when the Chamber can get stronger, which we will, as, as we get stronger, then the city, excuse me, then the businesses can do this for themselves. And then we've got the city and the Chamber doing things for the community, which is going to, you know, theoretically would double our, our strength.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if, if the city is having to plan activities that are trying to bring people into town to buy stuff at our stores, that's awesome. But the Chamber and the city together, not Parks and Rec, but the City Council, need to figure out how to recruit and get people into our city to have businesses, right? So, and we've got some ideas at the Chamber. But today, we try to figure out how the, how the city can, can support that.
What, can I ask you, do, what other resources are there that, that, you know, oftentimes you have maybe an economic development committee? Does the county, what do we have that we can also bring into this?
Yes, so that's, that's a great, and, and because I am a, you know, one person, and the people on the Chamber Council or Chamber Board all have jobs, big jobs. I do too, but my job is the Chamber right now, right? So, it's just, I mean, I've been at this since January. So my, one of the things that I'm going to hopefully have in my pocket by June is a meeting with the economic development organization in Pierce County. Because we've, there is an Economic Development Council in Pierce County. We're in Pierce County.
Mm-hmm.
What have you got for us? I don't even know. I have, literally, I don't know what to tell you guys. I don't know what to ask for. And if any of you know what to ask for, please message me, because I'll ask for it. But I want to know what kind of resources, what kind of support. I think it's possible, I suppose, that at some point Dupont could have its own economic development. Why not? But I don't know what it takes. I mean, is there a rule in the state that says you have to be a certain size? I have, I mean, I'm clean, I have no understanding of what they do. So, what I do know is that every empty building down around Wilmington or around our community has a different Realtor sign hanging in their window. Many of them don't live here or work here, so they've got our empty buildings on their inventory list at their company. And I suppose they're waiting for somebody in the world to say, hey, anybody got an old Ace Hardware that we, or space that I could use? I, I don't know what they're doing to actively, you know, recruit this. So, the Chamber has some ideas on how to engage those Realtors with the Realtors that are in our Chamber and say, hey, let's work together and do some promotion. But I'm, I'm not even sure what all that looks like. I don't know if there's a way to engage the Corporate Owners Association to get them a little bit more, like, I love it that a corporation would have their own Realtor and they'd put a sign up in the window. But if that person's not from here or from around here, I mean, how often are they showing those buildings?
Right.
You know, I mean, maybe that's all, maybe that's what the Chamber will do. Will just give us some keys and we'll show it anytime somebody wants to see it. Because I have Realtors that have joined the Chamber that are raring to go. So, you know, maybe, maybe that's part of it. I will tell you that, as I, as I read through these goals, quite honestly, everything still applies.
Okay.
So I didn't know how to look at this, was, is it that this was built 10 years ago and we just haven't gotten anything done yet? Or did we do some of it and then we lost some momentum? Because I think we've had some businesses, maybe, I'm just, I don't know, because I don't know the details, but somebody probably recruited someplace like Ace or, or something. I'm just using that as a good example, because there's other examples. But, but then we, we lost it. So, we got the recruit part. Did we get the grow part? How do you grow the businesses we already have? And I'll, I'll tell you, that is the main priority of our Chamber right now.
To grow.
How are we going to grow the businesses we have now? Because in about five to, well, maybe seven to 10 years, we're going to have a whole new development that's going to want businesses in it. And who's going to want, no, if people don't want to come off the highway to come to Wilmington, they're not going to want to drive all the way back to the old Fort Lake area.
Yeah.
So, so we've got to prove that we are strong and we're smart. So what does that look like? Well, I don't know that the city needs to start educating businesses. The Chamber absolutely will.
Yeah.
So we will, we'll have a small business development series next year. Here in about a month, you guys will see it on social media if you're following, we are offering all of our Chamber members AI training. And we'll start, we'll start getting some of that grow part, or that's the way I see the grow. I think there's other definitions of how to grow, but, but that's how, how we see the grow. We've got to give it a solid year, maybe two, of development for the businesses that are currently here. And I think that what we'll see after that is, we'll see more businesses want to come here.
Do you, so I'm wondering, when I read, you know, the goal ED3, where it's to, this regional reputation, to strengthen our regional reputation as a welcoming, attractive and business-friendly city. I don't, I'm curious, do you?
I got a lot of feedback on that one from the Chamber Board.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there, there's a lot of, they, what, what that translates to many of the people on our board is that we focused so much on these warehouses that we forgot about downtown. And downtown is a kind of a weird, you know, downtown, Main Street, Wilmington, there, we don't have one downtown. We have like, we have like three really good spots that show, that have room for retail or for businesses, services, all of that. So how, how do we give it some attention? And this is that recruiting part, I think, is, is a big, big deal there. And the retaining part. Now, here's what I hear. I hear that rent is too high and that, that there's, there's some people that, that complain that the city doesn't listen to the businesses when they need something. I don't know what that's all about. I'm working on it. I'm trying to not participate in gossip while I understand what the real stuff is. But I think what that comes back to is the city bringing in activities that give customers. Once again, I think we can resolve that. I think the Chamber can be a big support to that. We also have to engage these businesses that don't have storefronts. We have a lot of people that work out of their homes and sell stuff and do things out of their homes and, and we need to bring them into the business community. Not sure what that looks like, but what I'm hearing is that they, a lot of those types of businesses don't have business licenses, that they're kind of doing things as a side gig, as an under the table kind of thing. Part of our workshop next year, we'll teach them why it's important to have that license, right? So I think a good goal could be, if we're looking at SMART goals, which we do that in business, and I don't see anywhere in this economic plan, is a SMART goal that says and how, what, when, when should we see an increase in business licenses in our city? Or when should we see, you know, some, some money returning, you know, in the form of maybe business licenses or taxes or, or what have you? I guess the, the people who own the businesses that are empty, the, the buildings that are empty, they're still paying taxes. Well, maybe they should pay more taxes if they have an empty building. I don't know what that looks like, but it, what's, what's the penalty? Maybe that's the Corporate Owners Association, maybe that's the city. I could really use some guidance on that, because I think if you have an empty building in Dupont, you should totally get your hand slapped if it's not, if it goes too long.
We actually did look at that, at the city and, and, you know, at City Attorney to see if there was something that could be, you know, that, that could incentivize these owners.
Yeah.
To want to maybe get tenants in.
Yeah. And is it legal or not?
Not to charge like any higher taxes or anything. What you can do is require maybe through your design standards that they have to do something, you know, in downtown Tacoma where you saw a lot of these empty buildings where they had art installations, they had something, so at least it was creating some interest when you're walking downtown.
And quite honestly, this Corporate Owners Association makes it impossible to reach you or reach a corporate owner. So even, so we have to find them in order to ask them, can we use your space for something? And I don't, I don't know. I, I've, we've got some plans to, myself and our corporate liaison, Susan Patani, who's, who actually is a awesome communications and public relations person who works with Cal Portland. She's, she's on our board and she is sort of our corporate liaison. She's teaching me a lot of things. And if it's the, I'm going to get myself and Susan in front of the Corporate Owners Association, we're going to ask them a few questions, because they need to be part of the solution.
Right.
I think they want to be. They just haven't ever been engaged really, in a way. So I'm saying a lot of things, does that, is that, I mean, because I'm seeing it through the eyes of the Chamber of Commerce and I'm seeing it as something we need to take on. But we need support. And what does that support look like? Well, you know, I mean, it looks like money and it looks like time and, and resources. I was in a meeting earlier today and I listened to the mayor talk about all kinds of people that he knows. And I, I was just drooling and I was like, well then take me with you. Let me meet them too, because you know them, but I'm going to ask them for something. And, and I'll do it tactfully, Mayor, I won't embarrass you. I'll, you know, but I'll, I'll engage them in our, in our business, you know, community. Three goals for the Chamber this year. Membership, and then getting those members to get to know each other. I mean, I want them to love each other. And then to execute a couple of LTAC grants that we were granted last year. When Dana started the Chamber, she requested some LTAC grants, got them, and now we're trying to execute those, which is a lot of work to do when you don't have the money to pay for it in the first place. They're reimbursable grants, right? But there's, there's a lot of difference that I think, now that I'm understanding what our businesses want, I think that we can get different types of grants next year. Where's our splash on Wilmington? Why don't we have, you know, banners hanging from the light posts and, you know, where, where's our big celebration at Christmas? Things like this. And I think the Chamber can take care of some of that stuff. But we, we, meaning me, I need some education from the people who deal with this all the time. So, or, or council members and our committee members that, that know people and can connect us to, to things. I think it's absolutely possible to write the goals for the economic development and include some of the work being done by the business community. I think it's perfectly reasonable to do that, because I don't see this Chamber as fading away. It's, we're gaining some great momentum, so we're not going to fade away. And I know in the past, some things have been tried with business organizations and it didn't completely work, but, but we're, we're on a different trajectory this time. It's just time, maybe it's just our time this time. And plus, I'm full-time.
Yeah.
And I don't do another job. This is the job I do.
Yeah.
So.
And one thing I noticed is that we, we don't have any mention, I, I am aware of a pretty solid economy here with people in their home-based business, the home businesses, which.
Yeah.
We're pretty easygoing.
Yeah.
And encouraging people to have these home-based businesses, recognizing that that's, you know, in many cases, it's supporting families, it's helping them make their rent or their mortgage or something, you know, that subsidy, or it's full-time for one of the people. But we, we don't have anything in here that, that speaks to these home-based businesses.
There was one mention of it, and I'm sorry, I didn't mark it, but it was, it says something to the effect of essentially making sure that, okay, it's ED 3.3, provide reasonable guidelines and standards for the siding, siding of home-based businesses in residential neighborhoods to ensure that they contribute to the economic growth and diversity while not altering or impacting the residential character of the neighborhood. So I read that to say, let's just make sure that it still looks good out in the neighborhoods. But all that other rhetoric doesn't, doesn't proactively.
Right.
Support them, because we, we're not, we're not explaining to them how to get a business license.
I, I do want to say, so the original comprehensive plan way back when had comments about promoting cottage industry within the city.
I think we could write that in this.
If we do, we need to be careful, because in my street, there's somebody who runs a wood shop. I cannot sit in my back garden because he is out there. He gets home from work and he starts and he is selling this stuff on Etsy probably, I don't know. He's cranking out all the Army insignia and everything and it's all evening, every evening. And then there was another guy around the corner that had a motorcycle mechanic thing the entire. So this, you have to be careful. And that was when people started to push back and, and then it was taken out. But now, everybody has a home office, there, there is a lot more of this work in our homes and I'm all for that. But you're still in a neighborhood, so can you have a corner shop?
I would imagine that we have some city code that deals with a lot of that stuff already, right?
It's tricky, because if you have someone that is, has a wood shop.
Noise ordinance, we have already got.
It, well, it's, it needs to be worked out, but you know, what's to say that, you know, so what you get into in terms of compliance issues with that situation is, is, and that's probably why they aren't getting a business license, right? Because they could say this is their hobby, they're making toys for their grandkid, whatever the case may be.
But either way, we have a certain time of night that, that noise has to turn off, right?
10 o'clock.
Okay. Noise, I mean, I think.
You want to come to my neighborhood in the summer, sit out and listen to it.
But if it's only till 10 o'clock.
Oh.
It's like a dog barking, right? Bring the dog in at 10, stop the woodworking at 10.
Like I said, come and try and relax in the back garden over there. I wanted to make another point though, I wanted to jump back to cultural just for a second, because I really wanted the word regional interest in whatever, that needs to be way upfront in there as well. We have regional assets in our cultural inventory. Secondly, the, this, there are some people who, who want to make a million dollars. They, they want their business, they want to be millionaires, they, they get a Subway franchise or whatever they're doing and they're right off the highway. And then you have people who want to run a cupcake shop or whatever it is for the city, a dry cleaners, and they are a service to the citizens of this city. We do not have to get on I-5 when we have those assets here, but they cannot survive with the internal population of the city as it is right now. And so that is, how do you help them? And the other thing, just bordering on the cultural assets. And the other thing, just bordering on the cultural assets, not that golf is a cultural asset to me, but it does keep my husband busy, right? So we are nestled amongst four golf courses, uh, three of which Jeff can correct me are all public. You know, and that should be part of our marketing, um, and then things dovetailing off of that. And we're in, in the center of many more golf courses than that, actually.
So what it sounds like you're, you're talking about is, um, what we call the, the multiplier effect. So, um, when someone joins a golf tournament and I'm just making stuff up here, but she's going to be in the golf tournament and she brings her husband with her. What does he do all day? So what do we have for, for the spouse to do? They might stay in the hotel and watch TV. We've got the, if we've got the cleaners for, it's a service for our, our community. But there's no place for someone to stop and pick up a couple of things they need while they're also at the cleaners. They're going to choose a cleaners that has other businesses around it. So, so we got to get really thoughtful about that, what, what that means. And I, I really do think that an active recruiting strategy is something that we could probably pull off. I, I've heard some people say that the city is not allowed to recruit. I don't know what that means. I don't know what that means if the mayor can't say to somebody, hey, you should come to my town. I, I don't know what, what that means. So good. Well, I'm, I'm seeing confusion on faces, so I'm going to dismiss that. And, and say that maybe, maybe that's an aspect of how the city can support. And what, what does that look like? Does that look like the every city council person finding a, a lead? Maybe, oh God, I'm all right with that. But, but maybe what it means is periodic, periodic review, review. So I'm thinking that with this plan, this is a 10-year plan, right? We have, I really do believe we've got to get it in here to the economic development piece. A periodic review, uh, every two to three years. And I would like to see something like, like a, um, oh, what do you, like a, a town hall with businesses? Once again, we're kind of lucky right now. We got a chamber. Just call me up, ask, we'll, we'll get something worked out. And, um, the, you know, the, the businesses get to have a, a chance to talk to the city and find out, you know, what's going on or what they can do or what they need. But I think that needs to be periodic in here because the landscape of business is going to change so much from the beginning to the end of this that it, it's going to out, be outdated early on, and then we won't even want to try to apply it, right? I mean, even if we do put some good stuff in here. So, um, just a thought there. Um, once again, smart goals. I put, I did look at a couple of other things in here that, um, the regional, um, reputation as a welcoming, attractive and business-friendly city, E D three. I think that we have, um, I, I think there were a couple, few times throughout here that I saw the emphasis on, on Tacoma Pierce County. Things like, like that, like even, even in the part where it explained who the top, um, the largest employers were. They, it didn't, it didn't actually list anybody in DuPont. So I think we need to just get focused. We don't, we don't need to ignore the fact that people in DuPont work at other businesses around the Pierce County. But we also need to know who are our biggest employers in DuPont. Because they, they deserve the recognition. They deserve the focus and the attention that that would give them. So right now I'm thinking, when it's time to do our job fair next spring, um, it'll be the HR folks that are in these large corporations. It'll be ACU, um, um, Cal Portland, um, Basalite, um, Amazon, Tempur Sealy, FedEx. Those HR folks are who are going to come together and put on a job fair, right? Because they need the most people, but everybody's going to benefit. I bet we find a hairdresser for Dana at Studio D in that recruiting event. We might find the other positions we need, you know, to fill. Um, and certainly we will include people all around us. But we need to, in our strategic plan, I think we need to know who our actual top employers are in DuPont. And I guess probably pretty soon it might be, um, North Point. Hopefully they'll get started soon. I don't know how many people they're going to employ. I think it'd be nice to have an understanding of what, what that looks like.
Yeah, we're, we're not exactly sure where they are right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and even though they're not going to break ground for another year, when they do break ground, how many people are they going to employ? And can we ask them to have a percentage of those people from the local area? You know, in years ago, I worked, when I worked for, in stores at Walmart, we opened the, um, store in, um, uh, I can't think of the name of it now, but it's, um, up north and it was on Indian Reservation. Absolutely. We had, we had to have a certain percentage of our employees had to be from that Indian tribe. So I don't think that's out of, out of, you know, like a good idea to ask them to make sure that they're employing people from a certain geographic area. I don't know if that's.
Can I just say something?
Point is they're going to be subcontracting with other contractors and so.
And I bet, and we had an, an awesome contractor remodeled my home that I think would probably do a great job out of it.
Ma'am, hang on just a second. Commissioner Burleson.
Well, I think you can, thank you. I think you can ask them to, to recruit, try to recruit and hire people from the community. I think to say that we have to have, I mean, I come out of that world and you, 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 you work towards it. But you don't, it's not mandated. So I think, but I think it's a good point, especially for people who, um, you know, want to, are carpenters and they can find a job that's local.
Agreed. And, and it encourages them then. And then if it's in our strategic plan, then we report on it. And then they, we get to monitor, you know, this year, this many, next year, that many. I mean, if we've got several years, we're going to be going through and, and holding on to this plan. You know, we, I'd like to build in those milestones. By a certain year, what, what do we see, you know? I don't know. Is that, is that something we can do is, can you build in milestones to a strategic plan like this, a, a economic development plan? That, that allows you to make course corrections and adjust if you see something's not going the way you planned?
Well, I think we could like, you know, back to where you, the periodic review idea. I think that that's, that's a really good way of saying that, uh, you know, every, you know, every so often we review this, um, with the business climate or with, you know, the landscape. And, um, I, I think it's not a bad idea to, so for example, we have, um, employment targets that we are supposed to meet for the state. So we could maybe think about those employment targets, maybe come up with some milestones or other targets.
I'd love, I think that would be, I mean, that feels, that feels like we are really thinking of this in a business perspective versus a feel-good for the community and it'd be nice to have, it'll, you know, I don't know that there's room in an economic development plan for what we'd like to have. I think we need to see what we need to have, right? We need to have, because we literally need to increase the money that's coming to the city.
Right, right. The city desperately needs.
Or else, yeah, we're never going to get the, the things that we, we want or need here.
Well, and exactly. And so we know that we cannot, you know, the trajectory, um, for the budget is just based, based on, without, without additional, um, sales tax revenue, for example, with just relying on property tax revenue. We will not, that is, um, not sustainable. So, um, you know, I guess.
I hear from the interwebs that we may see some personal property taxes increase in the future in this state, right? It'd be really nice if the people who live here could, that have businesses here could increase what they're bringing into their business so they can, you know, afford their, their property taxes. I think that anything you talk about, right, trickles to something else. So it's not, it's, I guess I, I brought, I say it in a comical way there to say it's not silly if our, you know, local physical therapist makes more money. Because she'll spend it here and she'll be able to stay here and live here and pay the taxes if they do increase. And maybe they need to, whole different conversation. But, you know, there's things that, um, I mean, the people here need to be able to make more money. And I think that that's a noble effort. Um, on, on the, the part, the E D four, that was all about, um, transportation. And I really do think that, that it would be worth it to, I'd love to, um, allow, get our business community involved in a study session of some sort with the city to just figure things out because I don't know that we necessarily have to follow the, the path that we might have followed 10 years ago or something. I think that there's, there might be other ways. Especially if we find out, and I'm just making stuff up here. Let me give an example. Let's say Tempur Sealy was the one who told me they really need to be able to hire here. If a bus cannot come to them and they can understand why, why the city can't, won't, won't pay for it or can't pay for it or what have you, then they would be closer to making a solution on their own. But what we have is a disconnected community with our, uh, disconnected business community to our city. So they don't understand why, you know, other cities have public transportation. Silicon has it. Why can't we have it? Well, I heard, I found out that if the bus comes too close to Patriots Landing, now Pierce Transit has to pay for additional, um, like transportation for people who have disabilities and things. Well, if we're trying to avoid that extra cost, maybe it doesn't need to come that close. See, I, I'm full of rumors. I don't know.
I never heard that one. That's a new one on me.
Yeah, I don't know what I don't know. So I think a study session, but involving the business would be a, a good idea. So, cause, cause some of these businesses out there have the discretionary funds to potentially create a solution for our community. And then, um, E D five, it encourage a variety of marketing and tourism efforts? I don't even know what that means. I know what a tourism effort is and I know what marketing is, but I don't know what encouraging a variety of it means. I mean, why would, why would we just encourage it? Well, hey, yeah, put a video together, Carol, stick it on your Facebook and let's see if that, that works. So I think we, you know, maybe a real effort behind, um, what that means to market us here. And that's going to take a, a, a family of people. I mean, it's not going to be just, you know, I mean, we, we could get, potentially we need to use some of that LTAC funds to really get something, you know, important put together. And then a plan for how it gets updated every year. That markets our city.
Well, this was again, a lot of great information. Any, um, commissioners thoughts on, on this?
Commissioner Lynch?
Under implementation actions and policies, uh, there's an E D A one that establishes an economic development team. Do we know if that ever happened?
It did not.
Okay. So, um, that was, and it was pretty vague anyway, consisting of the commercial owners association. We know how that's going to go, go across not. So, um, the city and others, so basically there's nobody on the list. Other than, I have no idea what the Tacoma Pierce County Economic Development Board is. Do you?
They have a website.
Yeah. It's what?
They have a website.
They have a website. Yay. Did they answer their email? Okay.
But it is so, uh, common, you know, for counties to be the, the economic development association, the EDAs for county and cities. And, um, and if there is, so I don't know if there is now, it's been a long time since I've been in that world. But, um, E D A, the economic development, um, you know, at the federal government, you, you used to have what they called SEDS plans, which is a community economic development plan. And the federal government would then put some funding into, to these EDCs. So I, I don't know what the client, what it's like here. I mean, this is from another jurisdiction that I was at. But so, so I'm not surprised. I mean, I would, I would expect the county to have an EDC or an E D A. It sounds like they do, that we maybe need to check in with.
You know, I've seen several chambers since I've been following a lot of chambers since I got this job, that had, that are chambers of commerce and economic development, um, in the same. So I don't, I don't know exactly how they do that. I'm not sure that I have the expertise to just pick that up right now. I, I certainly don't have the bandwidth. But I mean, that could be, ma- maybe something like this is a, is something we work toward over a number of years. And we put some like steps in place so that maybe by year four or five, we have it in some fashion. Maybe it is something the city could do. Maybe it's something the chamber could do. Maybe it's something in between there.
Yeah. And then the other thing that, that we, um, you know, I can make some phone calls too. But, um, the commerce, our state commerce has really taken a big, um, chunk of, of doing, you know, economic development. I, I don't know, um, I'm, I'm usually more involved in the growth management side of things. But, um, but certainly let me give, put my feelers out and see what, um, what commerce has, um, in terms of resources to help us with this.
You, you just said something that I think needs to be built into this plan. Is in that, and maybe it's at the temp, at the intervals of review. Maybe it's just, I, I don't, somehow built in there that the people who know, somehow we need to be extracting that information. And I don't know if that is, we do have an unofficial, or I guess she's official liaison between the council and the chamber, M A. But it's not, um, there, there's really not a relationship there. And I'm sure that it's something we can make it what we need it to be. Um, but, but maybe that's, I, I loved the conversations you had about the liaison with the historic society. Some, somebody that knows what the city knows. So that when the organization needs it, they, this, they have resources, you know? Probably somebody in your role can call somebody up and get a little further than I can. A lot of data that I was trying to look up for this said you have to get with your, you know, you have to find it through your own city's information. So, um, I mean, there's got to be a partnership there and maybe we make that official in some way.
Yeah. Any, anything else?
I don't think you have to pay them though. I think that we can.
Commissioner Scow.
Well, first as far as schematics on the, um, the, the comp plan, uh, like I just want to point, and like we had talked about before in the pre, there, I, I'm with you as far as like 1.3. The city cannot, they can provide a, they can do their best to provide a climate, but they can't force certain things. That needs to be stricken right then and there. And it's also a very subjective, high pain. Well, what's high pain? That you're able to support yourself, that you're, I mean, so there's certain things, I mean, I think that one just needs to be stricken completely from the plan. As, as a longtime resident, it's quite a few of us are. I love your enthusiasm and your, your absolute go-get attitude. One thing I will say, being that we have seen an incredible history. It's not just that you're fighting the resources for economic growth. There are a lot of people who live here who fight economic growth tooth and nail. No one wanted Amazon. I, not no one. There was a strong contingent that did not want Amazon. There was a con, strong contingent that did not want that Sealy. There was a small group that fought everything they had, even though it had been zoned 20 years ago for those buildings. There is a reason that ACE is partly why ACE is not there anymore. And it's because we are on the brink of, with all this economic growth is coming, we are still, we still have a contingent of citizens that are small town. They don't want any of it. They don't want Old Fort Lake. They don't want extra exits, but on the same token, they want a grocery store. They don't want Old Fort Lake, they don't want extra exits, but on the same token, they want a grocery store. They want, they, they want, you know, they want to have both avenues and they're just, they're not understanding. You can't have a safe way if you don't have the economic support of it. So what we deal with in this town is that a lot of the, every, and every business that has gone out is, they try to cite it to foot traffic or everything. And honestly, every business that's failed has had an individual reason. Some of them started, you know, one of them started at the perfect storm, they started right before COVID and just never got their feet on the ground. But I can guarantee you that one of the issues we have and for the city, because sometimes the city is considered the bad people and the ones who, and all that, that there, that where we go with economic growth has to be treaded lightly. And it has to be presented because if it doesn't have the support of the city, your battle will be uphill immensely, which is sad. Because a lot of us, I mean, a lot, I mean, like, we are trying, like, all of us who have been on this board for years, we are fighting to do what is right by the city and we get pushback beyond belief. Because, and, and they're very knowledgeable and they have everything to back and they research and they know their stuff and they know the limits and they will find ways. And so when it comes to the next phase of this town, when it comes to the phase where we are, we start developing and all this and we try to support these new businesses, we have to find a way to present it in a favorable light and bring the community together. Because I can guarantee you that they will fight every sec, every step of the way. They, they, they want the things to be here, but they don't want the traffic and the population that support it.
I agree.
It's a, it's a really, really hard, it's a very, very hard thing and we have, I mean, we've seen it. Everything that we've done, everything that we have planned, we've had people fighting back. We had a full room when we were deciding what to do with the State Farm area because of pushback. And so that is something that we really need to, with the economic growth, we need to, and I think that, and make sure there is parts in here, we need to make sure that the community is behind us, otherwise it's just, it's, it's going to be fought every single way.
And, and it will be, and I want to, because I am one of those people. And, you know, when I moved in here, they tried to shove an asphalt plant down my throat. Good taxes, good business, but it wasn't what we signed up for and that's how we all cut our, to everybody that you're talking about, we have been through a lot. And at some point you've reached the saturation with warehouses, which my comment is on the economics. Diversity is a part of this because the younger generation just doesn't care about all the little stuff coming out of warehouses. So this is a temporary thing and if you look at economic forecasting, it'll show you that. And also, the lie was it was going to bring us all these jobs. It's not, and it's all going to be robotics. The diversity in our economics is important. We've done our due diligence on warehouses and traffic, what else can we bring to the table? Let's actively go out and find it and make that part of this. You know, none of it was supposed to be warehouses, it was supposed to be, actually that area was supposed to be a high school that was supposed to be training with Intel and internships. And so when you start seeing a plan that doesn't materialize.
Agree.
You become an activist, so that's how we got our start and why we're incredibly, we were going to have, you're going to get Old Fort Lake now, but before that, Goldleaf or whoever it was, was going to put in more warehouses. And I went over there and I said, "Over my dead body." And we activated it and now you're going to get housing and a shopping district and whatever. But how many warehouses were you going to squeeze into town? So diversity is important, we can't have all our business in one basket.
And it's had some good, don't get me wrong, it, I mean, no.
Well, I've got new here.
There has been a lot of good development from it.
Yeah, I've, I've owned a home here since 2003 and I haven't lived here for the last seven years. I moved away for a little bit and I came back, but I've followed everything. Here's, here's what I am up against, and I don't know if this is part of this economic plan necessarily, but the anti-feeling needs to, I, I've got to, I've got to help people see that they don't need to be against a Chamber of Commerce. Because a Chamber of Commerce, and I've been told plenty of times by people that it'll never work. I was told by one lady that she didn't care who I was, what kind of business experience I have, that I couldn't make it work. Fine, she doesn't have to be in the chamber, somebody else can be. So you don't have to do it, it's $65 to change joints. But the, the businesses in this community need a voice that's as equal to the voice of the citizens. So I'm not trying to bring the citizens around to approve of what I'm doing every day. I'm trying to get the businesses together. We have a Thai restaurant that lost its heat one day, when it was cold, about three months ago. And they had to turn people away because it was too cold to eat in there. Now, I know that if, if I lost my heat, I would reach out to my neighbor and Robin would either bring me a heater or she would say, "Come on over." This Thai restaurant didn't feel comfortable reaching out to anybody. So our business community doesn't feel like the residents here, they don't feel like they can call on each other. I guarantee you Patrick from Forelley's would have had a heater for them. And then people could have eaten in there and they could have had their day's worth of business, they could, you know. Then I find out that the person who rents them that space requires the business who runs, runs a business in there to fix their own heating problems. So we've got some work to do, we've got some work to do. And I think the chamber can fill that, fill that gap. But the chamber needs the credibility of a good economic plan that partners with the businesses. So I'd like to see more of that, of, of partnering with the businesses, not with Portland who's trying to run the chamber because I may or may not be doing it after a couple of years. Because I'd like to open a wine bar here in this little town, right? Because I want to just sip wine with my friends in the evening. But it's got to be set up in a way that whoever comes in after can follow this plan and work with the city. I know that this is chamber-heavy that I'm talking about here, but I can't find where it separates very clearly in my mind. Because it, it needs to, this strategic economic plan for the city is going to be delivered by the businesses, I think. And the businesses will, will pull together and will do this if they, if they know what this plan is. I, I'd be surprised to find very many businesses in our community that, that knew about this plan from 2015. But I think that we can, I think we can, you know, resolve that.
I think that's, that's a good closing point, actually, because it's getting late, but I think that.
Appreciate you guys for.
Oh, this was been a, a really great panel, actually, thank you. But I, but I, but to that, the comprehensive plan and the fact that there's economic development chapter in it at all, I think you're, you're right. I think that people really didn't even realize that that was part of, of this plan.
And can I tell you that the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce, they're all waiting by their phones to hear how this went today. They're so excited that the city reached out to us and asked us for our input.
Good.
They're just, I mean, I've been getting text messages and emails all day with people reviewing it, giving me some input. And it's probably not input that was, I mean, you guys probably expected to hear some of this. So it's not like anything new.
Right.
But we will, we will do the work.
Well, that's, that's really good, and again, I think.
I can help with the rest of this as well, I just need more time.
Oh, yeah.
The wording and the.
And to that point, let's, I'm glad we're, you know, I, I kind of was thinking this, these two, we, we were going to be pretty heavy on these two chapters, we'll hold chapter 10, next slide please. So our May 12th, which is a regularly scheduled meeting that starts at 6:30, right after the Tree Commission, we're going to be having our, Farren Pierce is the consultant that is working with us on a transportation chapter. They'll be coming in, that's chapter nine, and I, and I really think transportation will take our whole meeting focus. So then, you know, two weeks later, that's a question, we had talked about whether or not you all wanted to try to meet every two weeks. What's May 26th look like, when is our holiday anyway?
It's the 26th, so we had, well, we had talked about potentially like we had done in the past, is not doing it on Monday, the holiday, but doing it on Wednesday, the 28th.
Well, that, I'm afraid isn't going to work for me.
Ah, okay.
So maybe we look to the, it doesn't have to be just two weeks out, what about, we do have a lot to cover, that's for sure. But, you know, Tuesday, the 27th would work if that's something that is doable or we could push it out to the following Monday, which is the first Monday in June, May 2nd.
Okay, so Tu- Tuesday is the city council, right? Are they?
Oh, yeah, that's a council meeting, can't do that, that's where I miss Janet. Yeah, Janet would have said like, "Can't do that, Barb," but yes, June, June, June 2nd, Monday, June 2nd, what does that look like?
Okay, that'll work.
Yeah, June 2nd is good by me.
Okay, great.
And then the following week on the 9th?
So you'd have two back-to-backers, yeah. Which is. Yes, so.
Information for the 2nd and for the 9th?
Yes, because there's a lot of information. And I think what we'll do is we won't obviously try to get all this, so we're going to be, we've got cultural based on this, I'm not exactly sure how we'll roll this out, but I think that might be helpful to have those meetings back-to-back. Cultural, economic development, with both of those, you're going to anticipate some pretty big rights, rewrites. Then if there's any changes to transportation, you know, then, then, then we would have that. And then hopefully we can get into capital facilities. So did, in my.
Could we on our agenda put down the meetings at the bottom?
Yes.
And the times, so that, just that we'll keep it all, I mean, even, even if we have to read it two or three times, it's probably good for all of us to be reminded that way.
Yeah.
So we're saying here, and we can definitely, so we're saying May, May 12th will be our regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30 and we can definitely put this down. And then we move to June 2nd, which would be a special meeting at 6:00. And then our regularly scheduled June 9th.
A lot of information, but can we get it a little bit before that?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's going to be a lot of information and, and because it's, it's a consultant, they're, you know, they're got it all written up really nice, unlike this sort of what you get from me. So, just saying, we do what we can do.
Yeah.
When you pay, when you pay for things, it gets, it's all there, right? Yeah, better be.
And if it's, if I'm not violating the meeting, I can send everybody a text and just, you know, a friendly reminder and say, "Hey, look, the meeting is tonight."
You're, you're not, as long as you, you know, tell them that they're all on that thread and to make sure that you file.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
I'll do that, I think I have everybody's cell phone number, so.
And again, many thanks to, to Carol Portland and Bridgette for spending, you know, taking their time to come in and talk. That's, was really, really helpful, then we thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, I echo that, thank you very much for your time and effort. Real quick, right back onto the agenda, so there's nobody in chambers. And I think the only people we have online are Commissioner Colvin and Patrick. Unfortunately, John has tried several times to get our attention, but we couldn't quite hear him and we couldn't see his hand wave. And so I, I do, he's going to bring his questions to the next meeting and so I've been texting him back and forth just to make sure that he knows that we still love him, we didn't forget about him. One last chance, commissioners, any alibis, Commissioner, Vice Chair Scow?
While we're here and while Carol's here, I just want to publicly congratulate you on your very, very much earned award that you will be receiving from the Washington State Historical Society. That, just thank you for all your time and what you've done, it's just incredible and we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, actually, they had the award ceremony Saturday? Yes, last Saturday, yeah, and it was nice, so I appreciate it, yeah.
Any other comments? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned at 8:23, thank you commissioners and staff.